Around here?
Oh, it's here.
Everyone's here.
I'll call to order the Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 Town Council meeting to order at 6:33. Clerk McCauser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have almost everyone here. So, we have Counselor Bordelon, Counselor Cassieri, Counselor Franco, Counselor Jacob, Counselor Jones, and Counselor Parker, and Westerfeld, and yourself. And so Counselor McBride is missing, but I don't know if he's going to be here or not. Somebody may have gotten information, I don't know.
Thank you. Yeah, he won't be here.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, so that is a quorum. Will everyone please rise for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. Proclamation recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Counselor Cassieri.
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th to the 15th, 2023. Whereas each year, the second week of April is dedicated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas here in the town of Groton, we are extremely proud and grateful to our telecommunicators for the critical function they perform 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when an emergency occurs in our community. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of our law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas our telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information provided by citizens who call into Groton's Emergency Communications Center and relayed by telecommunicators to public safety personnel. And whereas Groton's telecommunicators daily serve the citizens of the town of Groton by answering their calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services, and by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas thanks to National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, our community can properly recognize these professional, highly skilled, and tireless heroes and highlight the demanding and often unseen essential role they play. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton does hereby proclaim the week of April 9th to the 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and the town of Groton to honor and recognize all of our telecommunicators and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens and community, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 9th day of April, 2023, signed by the mayor, Juan Melendez Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing Earth Day. I'll take this one, I suppose. Okay. Proclamation recognizing Earth Day, whereas all species play a unique role in the complex web of life and contribute to the ecosystem services on which all life on earth depends. The unique gift of intelligence and responsibility which human beings inherit at birth make our species stewards of this planet, and whereas the town of Groton has acknowledged and acted upon this responsibility to protect and nurture the environment of its residents, and whereas the town of Groton especially welcomes the presence, scientific research, educational activities, and participation of the University of Connecticut at Avery Point in the life of our community and in the protection of environment. And whereas the University of Connecticut at Avery Point and its environmental organization, Eco Husky Club, are celebrating Earth Day on April 19th on its beautiful coastal campus with festivities, music, food, and environmental exhibits, and invite all Groton residents to join in these events. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Groton hereby proclaims April 22nd, 2023 to be Earth Day in Groton, Connecticut, and encourages all residents, businesses, and institutions in Groton to join in the celebration at Avery Point Campus on April 19th from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., and to actively engage as stewards of the earth, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 19th day of 2023. Signed, Juan Melendez, Mayor of the Town of Groton. Okay. Proclamation in recognition of Thrive 55+ winner of the 2023 Wellspring Award. Counselor Jones.
In recognition, Thrive 55+ Active Living Center winner of the 2023 Wellspring Award, whereas Thrive 55+ Active Living Center has been chosen by the Connecticut Age Well Collaborative as recipient of the first-ever 2023 Wellspring Award. And whereas the Connecticut Age Well Collaborative is a statewide initiative to foster communities through aging, dementia, and disability inclusivity. And whereas the award was based on the idea that Connecticut is a wellspring of innovation and inspiration, and whereas the town of Groton was one of four towns who were granted this award. And whereas, excuse me, Thrive 55 was recognized for its work towards adopting a new branding identity and for its inclusion efforts for individuals with dementia and socialization issues. And whereas these efforts are known to have a long-term systemic community impact going beyond individual services and supports. And be it known, the recipient's work was highlighted at the State Capitol on April 26, 2023, at the Sharing and Celebration Summit honoring community excellence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council on behalf of the citizens of Groton does hereby congratulate Thrive 55 Active Living Center on receiving the 2023 Wellspring Award and their contribution to the community, dated at Groton, Connecticut, the 2nd day of May, 2023. Juan Melendez Jr., mayor of the town of Groton.
I just wanted to recognize Mary Jo Riley as being the supervisor of Thrive 55 and does an incredible job.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, before the proclamation to that, could we look at the 2, 3, 4, 5, whereas is it supposed to be the 20th or 2022, or is it recognized? Is that already noted? Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I think we're, just to point information, Mayor, I think the town manager said they were going to postpone it since we have time. It was just going to be edited, so we weren't going to read it tonight.
I thought we would just recorrect it tonight, she would print a new copy.
No, you could somebody read it.
Just read June 19, 2023. Okay. Proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. Counselor Bordelon.
I'm confused, I apologize. I thought you said we have time, we'll wait, so. In recognition, I'm on the wrong one. Proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union Army General Gordon Granger read federal order in Galveston, Texas, that all previously enslaved people in Texas were free. And whereas Texas was the most remote of the Confederate states and the last place for the Emancipation Proclamation issued, two and a half years later was enforced. However, this was not the end of slavery in the United States. People enslaved in Union-held territory were not freed until the passage of the 13th Amendment, several months later, on December 18th, 1865. And whereas the Town Council prides itself as a proactive municipality in the efforts of diversity, equity, inclusion. And whereas in doing so, the town of Groton wishes to highlight the significance of Juneteenth Day as a historical end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth will be observed on June 20th, 2022, 2023, that's the edit, sorry, for the first time, it's June 19th, actually.
Yeah.
So, the whole thing's, okay. So, in the packet, it says June 20th, 2022, so it's actually June 19th, 2023. For the first time in Groton, it will be observed as a paid holiday for the Groton Town of Police. Now there be it resolved that the Groton Town Council on behalf of the people of Groton does hereby commemorate the final end to the accepted practice of human slavery in all states and all of the United States. We celebrate and embrace our freedom, and we hold hope that all enslaved people throughout the world shall someday also be free. Dated Groton, Connecticut, this 2nd day of May, 2023. Signed, Mayor Juan Melendez.
Thank you. Onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-ct.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Okay, so we'll take Zoom first.
Adrian Thomas.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. So, Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. Just wanted to express some concerns over the past few meetings, and, you know, as also, I'm an RTM member, three. There is a situation, well, okay, so I'll get to it here. So, I am concerned with some parliamentary procedure issues. For one, during the budget process, the Town Council, the Town Mayor decided to limit the turns that any counselor could speak on any budget item to two total. And that, at the time, when I was there at the Saturday meeting, and it was first announced that that would be the policy, I informed that it is my belief that that was incorrect. And to my understanding, the Town Attorney now has validated that it is not correct, that the, anytime there's a motion on the floor, each counselor gets two turns to speak, and anytime there's an amendment, those turns refresh. So, you know, it was frustrating to have to witness the budget deliberations go on without, you know, the full scope and freedom for counselors to speak in the limited fashion that they have. So, I'm not sure if there's going to be some public acknowledgement of that, but I think it's worth noting and responding to in some fashion. And also, there was a couple of moments where, in the past few meetings of the Town Council, a non-counselor asked to be recognized by the body. And the mayor responded in saying, no, that's not what we're doing, we're not going to do that. And when in fact it is allowed within the rules of the Town Council to be recognized. And I would ask the town manager to pull up the rules and maybe read those, if he has those available. And, you know, just not seeing that adjudicated properly was very frustrating. And to the point where we ended up in RTM meeting, the moderator began to, you know, basically criticize the members for anyone, you know, on account of decorum, for, you know, how they handle themselves in a Town Council meeting, and saying that, you know, we don't have ex officio status, when in fact, you know, it's not ex officio status that we have, it's the right of any non-counselor to be recognized. Now, in order for that to happen, a counselor would have to yield their turn and their time for the duration that the non-counselor would speak. And I believe it's like Section 3E, but I don't have it right in front of me now. Unfortunately, I'm kind of moving around, doing other things. But I'll follow up with an email to the council to call attention to this. And lastly, I just want to, I participated in the Property Reuse Committee meeting on April 19th. I've been tracking those meetings fairly closely, and I had my own edits and comments that I wanted to throw in to the document, and, you know, thankfully, that committee is open and affirming, and they allowed me to participate. And during the deliberations, it was noted that no other counselors besides those that are on the committee have yet to submit any comments. And again, you know, I was here before, last month, asking the counselors who are so critical of the Property Reuse Committee's work on March 28th. You know, the mayor invited them and requested that all parties involved, you know, the committee and the critical counselors, work together and try to submit comments and come up with a compromise document that has a chance of gaining consensus and passing. And I was incredibly disappointed to once again hear that, you know, no counselor that was so critical on 3/28 chose to show up anytime throughout the month of April, or even submit comments remotely, which you are allowed to do. You know, so again, like, I just encourage everyone to operate with good faith.
Your time's expired, thank you.
In the process. Thank you. I would have preferred a warning. Thanks.
I have Kelly Poulsen on my list.
She's on.
She's here.
Oh, she's in person?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. Kelly Poulsen, 112 Lorwood Road. Groton just celebrated Earth Day. How many of you care about Groton and the earth? No hands. Okay. How many of you have listened to what I've been saying for the last 15 Town Council meetings, 16 Town Council meetings considering today, including today? Maybe you don't care that my house has been flooded with light for every single night, all night long, for over six years. Maybe it isn't happening to you. I don't know. Do you care about migrating birds, lightning bugs, and sea turtles? What about all trees, flowers, vegetation, insects, animals, human beings, whose reproduction is tied to the earth and circadian rhythms? I don't know. Maybe you don't care. Do you care about your loved ones, your family, your friends, and the positive correlation between light trespass and light pollution and the increase in cancers? I don't know. Maybe you don't care. Well, at least 180 Groton-registered voters do care. They want these residential light trespass ordinances, light pollution ordinances put in place. There are positive correlations between light trespass, light pollution, and global warming. Have you seen the projections? Well, I know at least some of you must care about Groton for running for Town Council, for being on the Town Council and serving this town. I don't know if you've seen the projections, but Groton will not exist if we don't start doing something. Projections show that Groton will be engulfed by the ocean, as well as the rest of the border of Connecticut and New York City. The state of Connecticut has light trespass ordinances for state lights. They have, there are towns in Connecticut doing their part by enacting residential light trespass ordinances. It is well past time for Groton to step up and do its part by enacting residential light trespass ordinances. We have to do something. This is the right thing to do for our homes, for our families, and for our planet. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinances stating light poles need to be shielded to prevent light trespass, stating lights need to be aimed down on property to prevent light trespass on adjacent properties, stating floodlights are not allowed. Lighting shall be in the minimum necessary in both number of luminaries and intensive light to achieve the intended purpose of the lighting. We need to do something, some way of helping global warming. There's a very positive correlation between light trespass, light pollution, and global warming, and we don't want Connecticut's coastline to disappear. Thank you very much, have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Genevieve Surf.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Genevieve Surf, I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. I happened to speak to this young woman who just spoke a few weeks ago in the hallway, and she told me that she was a member of the armed forces, she had served in the armed forces. Now, I would imagine that having given up her peace of mind, her safety, her comfort, et cetera, to serve our country, and she didn't want to tell you, by the way, she was a member of the armed forces, because she didn't want to, she wanted to be able to appeal this as a regular citizen and get a regular response. But I would think that, since she hasn't gotten a response, I'm telling you, she's served our country, and she deserves to have some peace in her house at night. I really wish you would do something. You cannot just sit there after 15 times that she's testified and not do anything about a situation which we can see from the photos is absolutely abominable. So, please, have a heart and do something for this wonderful woman who has served our country. Let's do a little something for her. So, what I really came up here for tonight was to try to defend myself. I have been accused of all kinds of things because I raised my hand during the committee of the whole meeting on March 28th, 2023, because I wanted to respond to something that Counselor Franco had said, and I was hoping to be recognized by at least the few friends that I have here for a few minutes so that I could say what I had to say. Unfortunately, it turned out that this council does not know the rule that allows a council member to recognize someone from the audience. And in the recess which ensued, manager Burt actually admitted that, because he knew the rule, and he also knew that the council did not know the rule. Therefore, I did not break any rules, I did what I thought, you know, was natural, because when I was on the council, we used to be able to do that. Which brings me to other things that we did when I was on the council, which was starting in 2014, 2015. In this meeting, the reason I wanted to speak was in this meeting of March 28th, 23, Counselor Franco, as part, I think, of her disapproval of the Property Reuse Committee, et cetera, made this statement, and I quote, "I've been on this council for five years. Prior to us, we didn't do anything with the school properties." And in fact, she repeated that twice. Well, that really upset me, because I could see that it was going to be used as a weapon against the Property Reuse Committee taking time to do the right job. But I would like to point out how many schools that we dealt with in my one and a half years that I was on the Town Council. The William Sealy School was the first school, where actually, I had to go for a recount, because when I voted, got voted into the RTM, it was only by two votes, and they did a recount, and it was in the William Sealy School. Betsy remembers that. We then proceeded to work for a long time with a developer who wanted to buy it, I believe it's a developer who's developing it now, and the butter, whose property the developer needed to run a road through and was not willing to do that, we spent many hours on the William Sealy School. The next one was the Noank School, which was the one I was the most involved with. And I, at the time on the council, I sat next to Bruce Flax, who was a Republican, incredibly nice to me all the time, incredibly civil. Bruce had spent two years of his life, two years of his life, working with Noank people on what to do with the Noank School, which is a testimony to the fact that the Property Reuse Committee thinks that the local population around these schools should have some input into the schools. In the good old days, I'm going to say, we used to do that, and Bruce had done an absolutely spectacular job. And the result was that we decided to keep the school. So, that was the first vote, I was a swing vote on that, was to vote to keep the Noank School as open space. The second vote that I was a swing vote on was to demolish, to have the taxpayers pay for demolishing the old school. And the reason that I did that, I have one minute, right?
Your time's expired.
Okay. Well, I had to put on a hazmat outfit, just so you know, and go down to the horrible basement and see what terrible state the school was in. And we decided to do it. We also just worked, we worked on the middle school.
Your time's expired.
And we worked on the east school that was near Pfizer. So, we worked on four schools altogether.
Representative Surf, your time's expired.
So, I just want you to all know that what Counselor Franco said about how life with the schools only started in your council is not true.
Representative Surf, your time is expired. Thank you. Is there anyone else in person or online who wishes to speak at this time?
Anyone online?
Anyone online? All right. Seeing none, we'll close receipt of citizens' petitions. Onto the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to adopt. I make a motion to move the consent calendar consisting of special trust fund contributions from April, the April 4, 2023 minutes, the April 5, 2023, and April 25, 2023 special meeting minutes. So, moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, second by Jones. Counselor Bordelon.
It's including the minutes, I just want to make sure before I comment, is that correct?
The minutes.
Yeah. Under Ian Thomas, it says, and he serves on the property use, he's not a actual member, so that would have to just be amended.
Okay.
He doesn't serve.
Which meeting? Page?
Uh, page 16 of the packet, and where it lists all the different people who spoke.
The date of the meeting.
Whatever's in our packet here, let's see. So, that would be April 4th. And it says that he serves, that's not true.
Okay, I think, I'll make sure we fix that.
Yeah. And also, on that, it's just interesting, because it also states, as an, I mean, I just recommend that you go back and look at the comment, because he serves on the property, that's not what he said at the, his comment, that he serves on the property use, he said something different. So, his comment should reflect what he stated. On here, it just goes into detail, he serves on the RTM, and he's married to me, and serves on the Property Reuse Committee. That's not what he said.
Okay, okay. Well, listen to it.
Okay.
It's been understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Care is unanimously eight, in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. Onto communication and reports. Counselor Cassieri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Friday, I attended Recovery Fest, which was a very well-attended event with an obvious great purpose, so it was great to see some of our local groups there, like Community Speaks Out, and glad I was able to attend. I received various emails regarding RTM budget process, a referral, cell tower, some exciting info that Mystic is in the top 10 places to visit this summer in USA Today, an issue at 99 Gold Star Highway, and the at ninety-nine Gold Star Highway and the Brook property. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? Does it sound like it's on?
I think so.
Okay, it didn't sound okay. I received the same communications as Councilor Cassiri. I went to the Workers Memorial, which is always, happens on April twenty-eighth, and hosted by United Weight and the local unions honoring those who have passed or were injured on the job. I also attended Recovery Fest, I made it towards the end, but talking to a lot of people, they enjoyed being there and getting information. And it was wonderful to see one of the speakers that I've known for a few years, that she did a wonderful job, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilor Franco.
Thank you, numerous communications, as well as attended the Recovery Fest. I want to notate that, once again, I will be stating that I will not submit my own personal thoughts or ideas on the reuse committee, I will be doing that here at the town council meeting, and publicly doing it here, and I think I have stated that at past meetings as well. There was also notation about how the council does not understand the rules. I fully understand the rules, I leave it up to the mayor to implement the rules and how he sees fit, and it is up to him to do so, and while I may know the rules, I do not need to repetitively or consistently state my...
What's your point of order?
Are we allowed to respond to citizens' petitions in this section? Just wanted clarification.
This is not town business.
Just wanted to make sure I'm clear.
It's just for communications.
Just wanted to make sure we... Thank you.
In that, that I would leave it up to the mayor to actually handle the rules, and I think what I have witnessed here was that when there is an unruly person in the chamber, the mayor has handled it, and as he appropriately should. And that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received the same emails and communications that the other councilors had. Friday was a busy day for events, start in the morning with the State of Groton, State of the City, and the State of Stoneton, attended it with Councilor Jacome and the town manager. Then, onto the Arbor Day celebration at Thrive fifty-five, where we planted eleven trees, and ten of them were part of a grant from AARP, so a big thank you to AARP for their tree grants. The afternoon was the Food Bank over in the city, and then later in the afternoon is Recovery Fest at Bequonic Plains. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Board along?
Thank you. I received a lot of the same communications that were stated, along with a email from the HR Director and Mark Berry about Juneteenth. I just wanted to thank all the teachers in our district, it's National Teachers Appreciation Day, I did participate, I know Mrs. McCoy was collecting donations for the high school. It's one of the things where at middle school and elementary, you kind of have more of a face-to-face with the teachers, but then once they get to high school, you leave it to the kids to kind of bring what's going on. So I just want to thank Melissa McCoy for rallying parents for the high school to donate items for Teachers Appreciation Day at the high school level, so it was nice to go up there and drop something off. I think teachers should be recognized and commended. We wouldn't be law enforcement, or teachers, or doctors, or anything really, without the first step of having teachers that we, you know, get us off and running, and they do an amazing job, and they're a valued position, especially in our community. Also, it's, I just wanted to see what else I have here. The town manager's going to give his report, we can ask a question then, is that correct?
As long as it's a simple question, yes.
I was just going to ask about the amendment, if you're going to speak to that, about amended motions, and if you were going to speak, I know it was stated...
Yeah, we'll do that under here.
Well, I'm responding to citizens' petitions, response to the citizens that spoke regarding the chances that they can speak at a committee of the whole, or which one can they be recognized, if you could clarify that. If it's not now, then you can do it later, I was just checking. As far as Mrs. Poulsen spoke today, originally I thought Councilor McBride had sent in a referral, but it was for something a little bit different. I did send in a referral to make it to the agenda, I need two councilors to bring it to the floor, so I did send that forward, but I'm hoping for the support of two councilors. I think that's all. I did attend the Fitch High School concert last week, which was the elementary, middle school, and high school, all coming together, it's really important to support the arts. And again, there will be a fundraiser at the Branford House, Roaring Twenties, put on by the Noank Community Support Services. Tickets are on sale, and I'm hoping it will be a great turnout. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Westerveld.
Thank you very much. I received much of the same emails, including some additional phone calls regarding the Mystic Oral School, also a couple of other emails regarding Branford Manor. Also, I'd like to point out that there will be a Property Reuse Committee meeting tomorrow, so anyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Councilor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Similar communications, you know, I attended the State of Mystic Arbor Day at Thrive fifty-five, food box distribution in the city with Councilor Jones and Councilor Parker, did also do the Recovery Fest, and I actually just recently came not too long ago from the downtown Mystic Resiliency workshop, which are doing great work down there, and I believe they'll be holding another meeting here soon in May, so thank you.
I forgot one thing, I apologize. Also, just sharing the post, I thanks John to the town staff for posting this, the Groton Food Bank locker is currently in need of the following items, it's online if you need it, but anything from instant potatoes to pasta to microwaveable items, to individually-wrapped items, also paper towels and non-perishable things. And lastly, May is Asian American, Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Asian Pacific American Heritage Month celebration. That's it.
If I could make a correction, they were phone calls regarding Branford Manor, and then phone calls and emails regarding the Mystic Oral School. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I had the pleasure of being invited to a repoint to their Earth Day celebration, so I want to thank those who put that event on, it was a really fun event, they had a lot of local organizations come and sort of teach the community about the work that they were doing, so I want to thank them for inviting me to that. I also attended Recovery Fest, it was exciting to see that the students at Grasso Tech are still very motivated and excited to keep doing the work that they think is still very important. And as always, the guest speaker at the end was sort of a highlight for me, just to always hear from someone who's been through it and their experience. And I think more people need to tell their stories, because that's how we'll get out of this problem. But that's what I have, so we can move on to Clerk of the representative town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the representative town meeting's next regular meeting will be May tenth at seven PM at Thrive fifty-five, the Living Center, which formerly was the Senior Center, in case you don't know that yet. Now, the RTM started, had their annual meeting last night, May first, and it was recessed after nine o'clock, and it'll continue, the next schedule is Thursday, May fifth, so that's what we have going on with that. Also, I have to report that District Three, Kristi McElroy was elected to fill that vacancy, and District Two, Jean-Claude Enboise was elected to fill that vacancy, and I previously reported Sarah Caden, Seventh District, fill that vacancy. So they have forty-one members.
Thank you. Clerk of the council?
I don't have anything for you, you've got everything that I forwarded to you.
Thank you, Councilor Board along?
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding the budget, I did tune in just to listen to see, did it, and then I had to get off because I had another meeting. There was a motion made to kind of just run the numbers that the council had, did that end up passing, or are they going to continue forward? I know...
They, that, those, all those motions failed, and they started with finance accounts, and then Wednesday it'll continue, you have, I believe you have the schedules.
Okay, so the motion that was put out by Jean-Claude Enboise, RTM?
And there was amend, there were amendments.
Amendments to that motion did not pass? Okay.
Nothing passed, but that doesn't stop them from doing it again, so.
Okay, I just wanted to see, didn't know if there was more meetings to come.
Yep.
Town manager?
Good evening. Just to clarify, I think the next RTM budget's Thursday, not Wednesday?
Right, the next, no, Wednesday is the, following Wednesday, the tenth.
Right, but this week is Thursday.
It's Thursday, correct.
In terms of the Telecommunicators Week proclamation, I did...
So May fourth is the RTM?
Yes, it is. At seven PM. So the Telecommunicators Week proclamation, I did present that one the week of directly to the telecommunicators, they were very appreciative, that went over well. In terms of recognizing people from the public, I believe that's at regular council meetings, not at cows, is my understanding. For any confusion last night, for the start of the RTM, it was, the RTM meeting was on Zoom, or it was on YouTube, Zoom and YouTube, not Channel Two, because the city met last night, so we always split it when there's the city, so just, there's any confusion. It's now available on YouTube to watch. As mentioned by Councilor Jones, I was one of the three presenters at the State of the Community event, just came tonight from the Downtown Mystic Resiliency Meeting, which was really good, there's, it was a great presentation as part of that, it'll be, should be on GMTV tomorrow, encourage everyone to watch, it was a really good presentation, interesting. Let's see. Branford Manor, I continue having a weekly meeting with Related, as well as a monthly with HUD. Related is down to two ledge-like complaints, though they don't have orders issued for them, so there's just two complaints there, and two with the City Building Department. We just received our first of two payments for miniature alcohol nip bottles for the second year, so I'm anticipating that I may be putting that on the agenda next week for preliminary talk about what, how to handle those funds. Let's see. Public Works, I know everyone's probably noticed for a while now with the pavilion along Route One at the boardwalk there, has been missing a roof for a while, after it had to be taken down for being in rough shape. Public Works is going to do that work themselves, are replacing it, they're hoping to start between two and four weeks from now, so that'll be put up hopefully pretty soon. Downtown, excuse me, Downtown Mystic Restrooms were painted last week, they're getting a little rough, so those were painted, so they're in better shape now. TVCCA, the new building, myself, several staff members, Deb Monahan, quite a few TVCCA staff members, Sam Kilpatrick in the Bequonic Bridge fire, as well as Mystic Fire, went to both Claude Chester and S.P. Butler looking at the condition of the buildings for temporary space. Claude Chester is probably not going to work due to the, just the condition there, and a lot of the amenities were removed at the time of closure, so it would have to be likely S.P. Butler is a temporary space. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Board along?
Yeah, can you just speak to the councilors with amended motion and the rules and how that works?
I don't have anything on me, sorry.
When the email, oh, I have it here, from the attorney, you sent his attorney's opinion, can you just read that?
What's the date of that?
Mr. Mayor, may I add something while they're looking for that?
Sure.
May fourth is National Prayer Day, so we will be having it at noon time here in the town, we're going to be outside, well, if it doesn't rain, outside of Thrive fifty-five, if not, we will be inside one of the meeting rooms, and I will post that online. And the other location will be at the City of Groton on Thursday, May fourth, at twelve PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Just, Mr. Burt, you had mentioned you're going to replace the roof on the gazebo, the last time I had talked to Public Works, they weren't going to, weren't going to do this, was that the change?
Yeah, originally, I don't know the full details, but I know they had some different thoughts about what could be done there, but after a meeting between Parks and Rec and Public Works, they kind of hammered out what would be done, and they have someone on staff at Public Works who's done that type of work, has some experience with that, so they decided to move forward with it.
I think from my conversation with them, they had said they were going to let it be until they replaced the whole boardwalk, but I think there was some need, people had spoken out about replacing that roof.
They decided, they determined that it really wasn't going to have an effect on any future boardwalk.
On the boardwalk, yeah.
I have it for here for four eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Set at fourteen what?
Twenty twenty-three.
Still, I really prefer to read it before, I don't see it in here. If you want to read it, feel free, but otherwise I'll send it back out or read it next time.
I have it, do you want me to read it? Okay, it says, John, council rules D-dash limits council members' comments on question to three minutes twice, and the second time after all others have had opportunity. By the third sentence of the rule, it expressly extends that same limitation to each amendment. We take away from this language that the council, when adopting a rule, anticipated that an amendment may be or, maybe or more than a minor substance to make it worthy of the same opportunity in the comment. Let me know if you have any questions. So, that just, I just wanted that clarified. The other question I have, is there any updates on the GOT space with the Rhode Island issue that we were named in that was in the paper recently?
Nothing other than we were never served, they would have to redo the process, their attorney was successfully removed at their request, at his request, from being the attorney because of misstatements from GOT space, and basically, it really doesn't affect us much at all, even if we were named, so.
And then you brought up the gazebo, the roof there, is there any talk at some point to do the walkway? I know I've gotten some verbal comments about the whole thing.
Yeah, it's part of the challenge grant, I thoroughly get that.
All right. And then, my last question, I just want to double confirm, a person can be recognized if a counselor wants to give up their time, it can't be at a cow, it has to be at a council meeting.
Correct.
So it can be done at a council meeting?
Correct.
And also, I would just add to that, the recognition has to come from this side, not from the other side, so someone can raise their hand, but they can't speak out asking to be recognized. A counselor could say, I want to yield my time to this person in the audience.
So my question with that, so if I was in the audience as a non-elected official and I raised my hand, would the mayor then say, I see your hand raised, may I ask what you need, and the person would say, I'd like to be recognized, and then you would ask, does someone want to recognize them, or any counselor could interrupt the meeting and say?
No, no, no.
The person has their hand raised?
So if someone wants to speak from the audience and they have their hand raised, if I yield the floor to you, or Counselor Jones, and I say, Counselor Jones, you have the floor, and Counselor Jones recognizes that someone from the audience wants to speak, he could say, I'll yield my time to this person.
All right. So we just have to make sure that their hands raised for that reason when we ask them, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I add something to that? And the other thing is, the council shall not recognize more than one non-councilor until all councilors have had the opportunity to speak or recognize a non-councilor, and may recognize no more than three such speakers at each meeting. So in other words, recognize only three people.
So in other words, recognize only three people, but after everyone has spoken.
Thank you.
And then just to mention, next week, we're also going to be doing the community center remodel, get an update on that. The architect will be here for that, as well as we'll be talking about the bulky ways to pick up referral, so.
Very good. Council Jacome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for you, John. There is, was it two or three employees in the Finance Department that you said there are positions open? Is that, are you running that internally for first?
There's three, three in the Tax Office alone. There might be one or two in other parts of it, of the department, but there's three out of the four in Tax Division.
Okay. And, but they're currently, is it still internal? Because I don't think on the website, I've only seen, I believe, the taxes.
No, they've been, they've been interviewing people from outside.
Okay. Also, it must have.
They're into the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Council Boardland.
I apologize. I just wanted to say again, I know I said the last meeting, I just want to send my condolences to the family of the newly, the new accident on Gold Star Highway that affected our community and around New London County yet again. So there seems to be like a high level of accidents, and I, with losses of life and major injuries, so just again, you know, the concern for the welfare and safety of our community, you know, I just again send condolences out.
Thank you. Onto committee reports. I don't have anything from the committee of the whole. Personal appointments. Chair Jacome.
The Town Council personal appointments met on April 18th, and we're going to be voting on the approval of the appointments here soon, so I'll talk, I'll speak to that when you can, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Parker.
We are scheduling our meeting for the referral that's coming to us, so within the next week or two, we hope to have a meeting soon.
Okay. Council Franco.
At this time, I would like to notate that I will be making a referral to the Rules Committee and to allow the mayor the ability to conduct budget meetings in the process at his discretion for future budget meetings.
Okay. Public Safety, Chair McBride's not with us. I don't believe you guys met in the past month.
We're meeting next week.
Next week. Meeting next week. Okay, thank you. Onto new business. Various appointments, reappointments for March and April, begins on page 32.
Mayor, is it okay to move it as one? So, resolution making the following appointments slash reappointments to authorize agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees, also known as ABCs, resolved that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to the authorized ABCs as noted. Appointment for alternate position, David Atwater, unaffiliated, 18 notes landing circle Mystic to the Community Development Advisory Committee, term ending 2/7/2025. The appointment of Cindy Berry, D-175 Laurelwood Road, complete Streets Advisory Committee, term ending in 2/7/2025. Appointment to Brian Kent, D-101 Prospect Hill Road, complete Streets Advisory Committee, term ending in 2/7/2024. ISO move.
Second. Okay, moved by Jacome, seconded by Jones. Okay, I'm seeing no discussion. Council Boardland.
Sometimes there's like a little bit of a write-up in here, the packet is that, was that in our other packet, or usually they talks like what they've done and why they're interested?
That would have been in the Personnel Committee packet.
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto FYE 2023, fourth quarter transfers, begins on page 33. I'll make a motion. You're doing, okay. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution for FYE 2023, fourth quarter transfers, whereas the Town Charter provides for supplemental appropriations to adopted budgets and transfers from the contingency function during the year, and whereas the Town Charter also provides for the transfer of funds from one department, from one departmental function to another departmental function during the last three months of the fiscal year, and whereas transfers are necessary and represent unforeseen or unexpected expenditures at the time the FYE 2023 budget was adopted, now therefore be resolved that transfers totaling $14,100 be transferred from contingency number 1094 to the following general fund departments' functions. Public Safety, number 1024035101, $9,500 for unexpected personnel expenses related to Gold Star Bridge accident. City of Groton, number 1090045220, $4,100 for utilities increases for city streetlights. Groton Long Point, number 1091025220, $500 for utilities increases for GLP streetlights, and further resolved that transfers totaling $192,500 be transferred from contingency number 1094 to the following general fund departments, functions, and referred to the RTM for approval. Legal Services, number 1006005290, $192,500 increases in FOIA, labor, collective bargaining, and assessment. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker.
Point of information?
Which question?
Are we just to the Town Manager or to you, whoever can answer? I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for all these, but are we moving all of this at once, or are we going each one?
They're all moved at once.
It's one resolution.
All right. Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
I'll read the next one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
For 2023-262-2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act, I make a motion to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals. Whereas the Town of Groton received proposals under the Neighborhood Assistance Act to achieve tax credit savings on energy efficiency and energy conservation projects and for program funding. And whereas the Town of Groton has received proposals from Community of Hope, St. Mark's Episcopal Church, Thames Valley Community for Community Action, I'm sorry, Thames Valley Council for Community Action, Sacred Heart School, and Malta for the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And whereas the Town of Groton supports the proposals from each of these entities and acknowledges that the post-program review will be their responsibility. And whereas the Town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services is responsible for scheduling appropriate public hearings with the Town Council to review said proposals, and now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby sets a public hearing for the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act for June 6, 2023. ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Boardland. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Loses unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
May I read the next one?
Sure. Alteration of Scenic Road 1206 River Road.
Item 2023-132, alteration of Scenic Road 1206 River Road. Resolution to approve alterations of Scenic Road 1206 River Road. Whereas Article 5 of the Groton Code of Ordinances, designation of scenic roads prohibits scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right-of-way or of the travel portion of the highway, paving, changes of grade, straightening, removal of stone walls, and removal of mature trees except for good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. And whereas Tom Palantonio, owner of 1206 River Road, requested that the Town Council hold a public hearing to solicit public input regarding the alteration of the River Road right-of-way in order to construct a paved driveway apron for Lot 2. And whereas the Town Council held a public hearing regarding the alteration of River Road on April 4th, 2023, and whereas the proposed work does not encroach on or change the width, paving, or grade of River Road, the proposed driveway apron will not change the character or adversely impact the neighborhood, and the proposed alterations are necessary to provide safe sightlines from the driveway, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves the alterations of Scenic Road River Road as presented on April 4th, 2023. ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Westerville, seconded by Boardland. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
I can read the last one.
Thank you.
Item number 2023-309, Long Island Sound Futures Grant, 2023. Resolution endorsing the submission of an application to the Long Island Sound Future Fund for environmental and sustainability projects in the Long Island Sound watershed. Whereas the Long Island Sound Futures Fund, LISFNEB, has issued a request for grant proposals for environmental and sustainability projects in the Long Island Sound watershed. And whereas the Long Island Sound Futures Fund is managed by National Fish and Wildlife Foundation in collaboration with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, Long Island Sound Study, LIS, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, LISFF, and is a longstanding grant program that assists projects that address the implementation actions contained within the Long Island Sound Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan, CCMP. And whereas obtaining these funds will allow for up to three important coastal resiliency projects to begin as soon as later this year and be completed in 12 to 18 months after initiation. And whereas these projects would include one, permeable pavement in storm water, two, roadway vulnerability study, and to update the town's road and drainage standards, and three, a culvert redesign for a road stream crossing for fish passage and flood improvements. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council endorses the submission of up to three grant applications to LISFF for the coastal resiliency projects as proposed, and authorizes the Town Manager to sign all required grant documents to apply for, submit, and receive said grants. ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Boardland. Council Boardland.
Just a quick question for the Town Manager. I know there was, it was said that some of these might not, do you have a rough idea when we'll know which ones are possibly going to go forward in its entirety, or?
I would expect pretty quick here. I'll reach out to Megan tomorrow and ask her for an update.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I think it's great, and I think Megan's doing a great job trying to bring in the grants to, you know, submit and put us, you know, in a position where we're bringing in things to help our communities, so really excited about that.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Council Parker, seconded by Jacome. All in fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Abstentions. Carries seven in favor, one opposed, Boardland zero abstaining. We are adjourned at 7:35.